...invocation and pledge by the Honorable Johnny Max Curry.
Thank you.
You bow heads, eternal and lasting God, we actually create as a clean, clean heart and right spirit after you go forward in the county and council's business, it was the right spirit to direct us in the right direction. In the name of Jesus Christ, may we all say amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hip, are you in?
He has not joined yet.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hip is out, I think was planning on zooming in tonight, but apparently he's not at this time. All right, item number one, additions or deletions? Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Arrowood. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Let me know when he zooms in, Taylor.
Okay.
All right, item number two, ordinance number 07-1521, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the County of Newberry adopted on June 20, 2016, so as to amend the zoning map, acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established, codified in chapter 153 of the County of Newberry Code of Ordinances, so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling seventeen point seven three acres designated as TMS parcel number 523 dash four six from RS single family to residential R2 rural. This is the second reading. Do we have a motion to speed the second reading? Motion by Ms. Arrowood, second by Mr. Shealy. All right, any discussion? Any changes from last time? No changes. All right, no discussion? Motion second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number three, ordinance number 07 dash seventeen dash twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an equipment lease purchase agreement in an amount not exceeding four-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, relating to the purchase of certain equipment by Newberry County, authorizing and execution of other necessary documents and papers and other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion to speed the second reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Ms. Arrowood. Any discussion? Is there...
Is there any...
I'm sorry.
Is there any description of what kind of equipment we're talking about?
That was on my email.
Yeah, it was, it was, I'm trying to think what all it was. It was a piece of equipment for the motor grader or something for public works. It was...
Yeah.
Mini brostrop for private apartments, flattened for public works.
That's it.
Non-numbered call recorder and hangers.
Okay, and it's four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand is the budget amount. Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Mr. Curry, you in favor?
Curry.
Mr. Curry, you in favor? Also, with that, Crystal's not here tonight. Her mother is, mother, am I correct, is not doing well at all on a ventilator, so obviously she'd be here otherwise to explain it. Just keep your thoughts and prayers with her. Item number four, consideration to redistribute funds in the fiscal year 2122 budget for the expansion of the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. Mr. Farmer, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. As you all know, we've been working for almost a year now on plans to expand Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. That park is bisected by a creek, and we've never been able to get to the other side of the creek. This plan would do so, build a bridge and a road, drag some water and sewer lines across that, and open up about seven new sites for economic development in the future. At the Economic Development Committee meeting in June, I informed the group that, that we had not received one of the critical grants that we had applied for, a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Rural Infrastructure Authority. This year, all of those grant funds went to burden-hand projects. And what I mean by that is there's a prospect and there's actual jobs behind those. We didn't qualify because ours was a speculative venture. We don't have a prospect in hand, so we did not win that award. We also saw a reduction in our request from the South Carolina Power Team. We asked for one million eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Instead, we really received one point five million. Having said all of that, we still received two point one million dollars worth of grants for this project, a one point five million from the Power Team and another six hundred thousand from the South Carolina Department of Commerce Locate SC Fund. Now, that put us in a position where we basically had two, two choices. The first was to come back to council and say, hey, can you make us whole, give us some more money so we can do this project in total? We didn't like that idea because we believe it's important to live within the budgets and live within your means. So, we decided at that point it would be a more appropriate thing to do to scale back the only portion of this project, which was fairly optional, and that is the pad for, for this park. Again, this is a speculative pad. It's designed to cut time off of a prospect's construction. It can save them a lot of time and money in terms of locating here. Originally, we thought that, that we would just scale back the pad, but on further review, we've decided to eliminate that pad. And the reason we're here tonight on this subject is we're going to ask for authority from the council to redistribute the funds from the building pad to the water and sewer portion of this budget. We believe the water and sewer is a very high priority. A pad would only affect one prospect. Water and sewer would affect all prospects. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd like council to consider authorizing this redistribution of funds within this budget.
All right, you all have heard the explanation from Rick Farm, Economic Development Director. You've heard the explanation as to why. There also was an attachment in the agenda that outlined why we're doing this. So, any other questions for Mr. Farmer?
I just wanted to make, in the original, there is still some funds for the pad, but not enough.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's still going to stay there.
There is about three hundred thousand dollars left in the budget that could potentially be put towards a pad or some other cost associated with this, but it's not nearly enough to even do a partial pad.
I just wanted to bring that out. There is still some there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just think it's so wise to stay within your own budget. I agree that the infrastructure of water and sewer is far more critical than, than a pad at this juncture. And so, I think the documentation's right, and, and I think it's a wise decision.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All in favor of giving Rick the liberty to...
We have a motion.
Oh, well, yeah. Do we have a motion to allow the redistribution of funds?
I have a motion.
Motion by Mary, second by Travis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, item number five, consideration to approve Lennel's Construction, SCLLC, for the expansion of the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park in the amount of three million seven-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Mr. Rick Farmer.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. On, I believe it was June twentieth, we met here in this building to open the bids for this project. Present at that meeting were Alliance Construction Engineers, our engineers. Also present was the purchasing director, Crystal Waltrip, and myself. At that time, we received two bids for this project, one from McLammon Associates and the others from Lennel's Construction. There was a big variance between the, the two base bids. One was about one point one million dollars more than the other. So, at this point, we would like to ask council to consider approving the low bidder in the amount of three million seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and one hundred and thirty-three dollars.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the low bid.
All right, do we have a second? All right, under discussion, do we have an idea of why it was that much of a discrepancy?
DePaul, Dave, can y'all...
DePaul. I would say one thing is that prices are skyrocketing on construction materials. The price of things like concrete pipe are up dramatically through all this. So, there's, there's a lot more unpredictability in the bid process today than there was, say, a year and a half ago.
You would think it would be closer. They both got to deal with the same material.
Thank, thank you, Rick. Mr. Chairman, members of council on DePaul, Elliot Townby with Alliance Consulting Engineers, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. To answer the chairman's question, contractors are very busy these days. We have to pretty much beg them to want to work, and they have staff shortages. And the cost of materials, especially pipe, concrete pipe, PVC pipe, we don't have anything steel related on this project. It would be even more. So, that's, that's really the big variance here. So, McLammon Associates out of Little Mountain, they know, shaping Little Mountain area, they're, they're busy. I think they're working on part of that I-26 widening. So, it's a matter of, you know, which contractors want the project more. And this is a local contractor, so he wants to work on the project. But we're seeing this statewide and actually in a couple of the states as well. There's a lot of activity going on right now in the construction industry, and contractors don't have the manpower or the materials, so they're just picking which ones they're bidding on.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for DePaul or Rick?
It's not really, I guess it is in the form of a question. I know the answer, but I think for those watching either here or out, th- these funds are already allocated. There's nothing that we're looking at any additional tax base or anything for that.
Yes, sir.
So, I just wanted to say that out loud.
The funds for this project were approved in a budget amendment passed by council earlier this year, and both the two point one million dollars of grants have been verified.
Thank you, because that does get a little confusion for the public.
It does.
Seeing it come back to that, it's not an additional expenditure. It's just getting it bid, bid it out. So, it's already really been approved.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess the three hundred thousand dollars, if we were to get a particular project that could also be used to help match for grant funding to complete or to do the pad or work with the state or Department of Commerce in any way that we need to, is that correct?
That's a great question, Mr. Chairman. So, one of the things is, while we're not constructing this building pad, we will have the plans done and permitted. That's time savings for a prospect. If we had a project today, we could show them the pad. And if we had a project that has, you know, X number of jobs and capital investment, we have other partners from the Department of Commerce and other entities that could step up based on the capital investment and jobs. So, definitely.
So, we can show them a virtual pad?
Yes, sir.
I like it.
We can show them a permit, which is really what's a lot of money.
Bigger thing than the pad.
Right.
All right, thanks, DePaul, and thanks for all you do. Rick, thanks for all you do. All in favor of this project? It is unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, executive session. I don't think we're in need of one. Public comments? I think we had one signed up, if I'm not wrong.
Mr. Randy Mills.
Randy.
If you come to the podium, state your name and address, Randy, and then we'll go from there.
My name's Randy Mills. I live at twenty-one fifty-one Boyness Road. It's Prosperity Address, which is in Palm Area, really. The reason I'm here is about the sewage plant out there on Boyness Road. It's been going on for fifteen years or so now. That place, at times, we can't go in our yard on kind of the odor. It's no sense in us living in the country and having smell city sewer pumped out there to us. And the reason I'm here tonight is because they building all these houses out there on the end of the road. I suppose we gonna build them. The industrial park y'all talking about, all that's gonna be sent over there to us. They can't handle what they got now. How they gonna handle all this other? You know, it, it's, it's just ain't right. And I have complained. I've called DHEC. I've called Rick Martin. That's the only hip-hop guy. I'm asked to speak to the governor. But the people in Boyness Road are tired of this. I mean, y'all can, they can stop it within a couple hours when we complain. Two hours later, you won't smell it. We've been told that the law is, we ain't got to smell it no time. We ain't got to smell it within a thousand feet of the center of that plant. So, it's, it just ain't right. And they want to pump all this other end to us? What are y'all gonna do about that? I'd like somebody to give me some kind of answer.
Is this not the Newberry Water and Sew Authority that...
It is. And they are almost, I don't say directly across the road from, but pretty, pretty close by.
Maybe half a mile.
Yeah.
And one of your members here lives there. He can tell you. I'm not up here just trying to start no junk. This is true.
You can't smell it at times.
I mean, you can't stand to ride by the plant. It pretty smelling, most smelling there all the time. From the road, you can smell it most any day. Some days you don't, but mo- most of the time you do. But when my grandson comes over to see me for Father's Day and walks out of my yard and tells me how bad my yard stinks from kind of that plant down there, that ain't right. I mean, we can't even eat in our yard. We can't barbecue or do nothing out there, because you don't never know when the smells gonna drift in on you. It's just ain't right.
Tony, can you get with him tomorrow and see what we can...
Yes.
Done on that?
Absolutely.
Keep reporting back, Randy, if it's not done.
I will. You ain't got to worry about that.
Thank you, sir.
And one more thing.
If you catch me cutting, nothing else.
One more thing. Who owns that, that plant? I've heard it's private-owned company. I've heard the county owns it. Who owns it?
Newberry County Water and Sew, am I correct?
I, I, I thought the Water and Sew Authority owned it, but I don't know that.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Randy was told that the county owns it, but I don't think that's correct.
No, I was told the private, a private company owns it.
Okay. We could find out that easily.
Well, that kind of stuff, we should already know.
I'm pretty sure it's the Water and Sew Authority, if I'm not bad wrong, owns that.
And, you know, what are they gonna do when they pump all this other stuff? They can't handle what they got. How they gonna handle more? You know, somebody needs to help with this, get in behind it.
We'll try to get you some answers. She's getting y'all's information. We'll be in touch.
Okay, I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate y'all letting me speak.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate you coming out.
Y'all have a good one.
Anybody else signed up? That's it. That's all? Can we go back to appointments, Mr. Tim? Did I skip? Yes, I did. Appointments?
It's okay.
All right. Who all we got for appointments tonight?
I've got a couple.
All right.
Got Border Rural Fire Control, Aubrey Horn Senior for St. Phillips.
All right, we got a motion for Aubrey Horn Senior. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of Aubrey? It is unanimous.
I'd also have Dwight McDuffie in Prosperity.
All right, Dwight McDuffie. Got a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mary Arrowood. Any discussion? All in favor? That one is unanimous.
(phone rings)
Dwight calling and wanting to be on the board?
Good luck with that.
Yeah. All right, you got any others, Nick?
I got Board of Rescue Squads, Adam Crouch, Prosperity.
All right, Board of Rescue Squad, Adam Crouch. Do we have a second for that one? Second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor for Adam? It is unanimous.
And I have one more. Library Board, Sandra Oliver.
Ms. Sandra Oliver, Library Board. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mary Arrowood. Any discussion? All in favor of Sandra? It is unanimous.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, who else has some appointments tonight? All right.
I do.
All right, Todd.
Yes, for Board of Rural Fire Control from Station Three, I would like to nominate Clay Bodie.
All right, we have a motion for Clay Bodie. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
I'd also like to nominate Mr. Blair Long, Chief of Bush River Fire Department.
All right, Mr. Blair Long. Motion, second by Mr. Shealy. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous.
And to the Board of Rescue Squads, I'd like to nominate Mr. David McKee.
All right.
I'm sorry, David Andrews. David Andrews.
David and David.
My buddy. He lives in Union County. I don't think he can do that.
He probably won't ride to the meetings.
No.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Curry. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Other appointments? All right, I have Mr. Nat Brochek, Board of Rescue, second by Mr. Shealy. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, and also Mr. Jason Fulmer.
I think that's good.
Oh, that's right, that's right. We're good on that one.
We'll get those last time.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any, any discussion? All in favor of everything? We're unanimous on that. All right, now, council comments from county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief, but I do have a couple of follow-ups from the last meeting that I wanted to mention to you. The first item, the capital projects' sales tax that I had mentioned at the last meeting, just to, to get on everyone's radar. We are now beginning the timeline of, of how all of that will unfold. The staff and I met last week with a bond attorney, who I understand normally guides us through this process. And so, we will be bringing back to the council on the eighteenth of August, which is your next meeting, I guess the kickoff action that we'll need from you, and that'll be the, the creation of the commission for the capital projects' sales tax. Now, you won't actually make the appointments at that meeting, but you will officially create the commission by resolution. So, we'll be bringing that back to you on the eighteenth. So, you may want to begin thinking of how you want to make those appointments once the commission is created. Will a council offer up nominees? Do you want the staff to do that? And I don't need an answer tonight, but just think about how you want to begin that process, because we'll be bringing that to you on the eighteenth. Second item, and I think Taylor sent to you today and a few, a week or so ago, an email about the solar farm work session that's coming up, again, that we talked about at the last, the last council meeting. We're looking at potentially setting that up for possibly the first, probably the second week of August. I know some of you have already expressed some conflicts with the last week of July and, and even the first week of August. So, again, think about what may work for the council. We do need to get to that work session before the eighteenth, because if you will remember, the second reading of the zoning ordinance is coming up on the eighteenth, and that is the, really the origin of, of the work session, is the, the zoning ordinance that got first reading on the, at your last meeting. So, again, begin to think about, if you will, what date will work for everyone, and we'll get that set up once we get some, some additional feedback.
We'll have some people, experts with some answers at that work session.
Yes, we are making contact with various and different agencies, including DHEC, who has, I think, as I understand it, on staff, someone who has some expertise in solar farms. And we're trying to get, of course, a neutral agency or a neutral party so that we're not hearing one side versus the other. We just want factual information to present to you. So, the sooner we can get that date for the work session, the, the sooner we can lock in who the speaker will, will be so that they can set their schedule to be with Final item, and again, this is an item that I mentioned to you at the last meeting, the redistricting matter that, that we are beginning to look at now. I believe I had mentioned to you at the last meeting that we have approached the state. The... I'd mentioned to you at the last meeting that we have approached the state, the Department or the, the Office of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs, which offers assistance to counties in the redistricting process. So, we made a formal request to them, seeking their assistance. They have formally responded back last week, saying that yes, they would help us. They've also indicated that the, the, the first batch of the data from the 2020 census is expected in September, I believe at the end of September. So, of course, once we get that or begin to get that data, then we'll be calling in Frank Rainwater is the gentleman's name from the Office of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. So, they'll be setting up some, some informational workshops for the council and for the staff, and I just wanted to give you a heads up, because that'll be coming up again within the next couple of months. And beyond that, Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have.
Thank you, and thank you for your continued due diligence of working through things for us in, in the interim. We appreciate that. All right. Next item we have is council member comments. Mr. Shealy?
Thank you, everyone, all the employees for what you do for the county. Appreciate all of you. That's all I got.
All right, Mary?
I don't have related contact.
All right, Todd?
Greatest county, greatest folks, and greatest people in this, in the world, right here. We're blessed by each of you.
Mr. Curry?
Everything's great. Seems like in my area, the solar farms exploding up in Civil Street area chapters. I have, every landowner have contacted me and said, I, I mean, waiting for us to start a, when we gonna have a conference, would they be invited? I told I let them know, but all the landowners around that area, six of them have came down last Saturday to talk to me concerning that issue. And I told them, I let them know concerning the work session, if we have one, or the input, they want to have some input to put in at the next council meeting, at the next conference we have, concerning the solar system. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Reader?
I just want to thank all the county employees for all the work that they have been, been doing. I know it's going through difficult times, and right now, we at a crossroad where we don't know whether this new COVID problem is going to exist. I think DHEC is out now trying to figure out what we gonna do for the beginning of school. So, I'm hoping that everyone will take care of themselves, not only yourself, but take care of the person right beside you. Make sure everybody's health is okay. Make sure everybody getting their shots if necessary. Hoping everybody just, just keep they self-focused, because, you know, the moment you take your eyes off things, that's when things go bad. So, please, everybody, stay focused.
All right, thank you. All right, comments on my behalf. Just, again, Tony, thank you for what you're doing. I know it's probably quite a transition to come in and take over. DePaul, as always, thanks for all, you and your team. Appreciate what you do. Again, to the employees, thank y'all. With that being said, our future meetings, our Public Works and Planning Committee will be August 16th, 2021. The next county council meeting will be August 18th, 2021. Then, the next one will be September 1st, 2021. County Council will not meet the first Wednesday of August, 8/421. Will not meet. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mary, second by Nick. We are adjourned. Thank you again for coming out tonight.